Today is ten eleven twelfth. I keep wanting to add a thirteen after that, but that's not lucky. I'm showing it at seven thirty. We're right on time. Ms. Sarcisi, could you please call the row?
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Daryl.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Moan.
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Nick Molnar to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will say our invocation for tonight's meeting.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to your honor, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lord, on behalf of all those who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. For this assembled council, I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern among the mid-conducting, conflicting interests and issues of our times. A sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fulfilling, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. All right. Minutes, we have some minutes tonight. Do I have anybody that would like to change minutes, or do I have a motion to accept this written?
Actually, this was very lengthy. Just being, I don't know if you guys know, but it's like four hundred and fifty lines, and you do a great job on this. But I didn't have time to look at it, so I'd like to postpone it until next week, because this was our lengthy meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? All right, so the minutes are held off for next week. The next part of our meeting is public comments. We ask you to sign in for public comments. When you sign in, and it's your turn to give your public comments, please come forward to the microphone and state your name and address. First on the list tonight is John Casmer. John?
I'm John Casmer, Chinook Trail, Macedonia. I'm talking for the Longwood Manor Association with some updates. I, we had Jackson Heating from Twinsburg inside the manor last week. The gentleman is, actually, Jackson Heating is run by Paul Jackson. I met with Mark Jackson. He's, he's the son. And he was very familiar with the manor. He did the furnace work when the colonel was living in the house with the old boilers. And he also worked on the newer system, which is the forced air heating system. And Jackson Heating is a reputable furnace contractor. They've been in business for a number of years. And I've gotten a firm commitment from, from Mark Jackson. We have a piece of our, of the repair plan that has to do with the furnace. We allocated, I think, six thousand dollars for a furnace replacement. Well, Mark Jackson gave me a firm commitment. They will take care of the furnace work when we get to that part of the project for us. So I wanted to thank him. They apparently, right now, they're doing a program called Heat the Town in Twinsburg. This is local heating contractors who are helping people who are without heat. They do it on a donation basis. And we're really glad that if they would be able to help us with the, with our no heat situation at the manor house. So that's coming up. Second point, real fast, I met with a gentleman named David Milstein last week, who also offered to try to help, help us with the restoration. I'm waiting to hear back from him for some more information. I don't know, I don't particularly know his background. The main point I want to make tonight, though, is I have an urgent message I want to address to the citizens of Macedonia. I want to make them aware that we need the residents, businesses, and contractors to really pitch in and help at this point. They may not be aware that we lost the general contractor that we were working with for the first six months. He's retracted his offers to do the repairs on the manor. We thought, we thought that was going to happen. We thought we were going to get a lot of these repairs done for free. The last work that we're actually going to get started the next day, the city stopped the work because of resident complaints. So at this point, we don't have a general contractor. We do have a permit posted in the house for the column repair, which is one of the repairs cited. So we are looking for a tradesman contractor who could do that work, a licensed contractor in Macedonia who is in good standing with the city. We're asking for help with that. We're also still working to get that roof. That was what we thought we were going to have by this point. Fortunately, unfortunately, we don't. We're trying to get materials donated for the roofing materials, and also get a roofer lined up. I'm kind of acting as the general contractor right now, contacting these different tradesmen. And we're also, I've been up on the roof. It looks like there's, and I've actually gotten up on a ladder and looking around. It looks like the wood underneath the slate shingles, a lot of that, I think, is going to be rotten. I'm just estimating maybe fifty percent of that could be rotten underneath the slate when that comes off. So that would be about sixty, sixty-five, four-by-eight sheets of treated plywood, three-quarter inch. We're looking for, we're looking for donations for the materials, and like I said, for a roofer to come forward. We have a plan for the roof. We have a plan for the roof that, that was done. We don't need a permit specifically for the, for the roof work. Now, and we're also looking for electrical and backfilling help. So at this point, at this point, we're not where we thought we were going to be. Okay? I want to tell the residents now that we may not be able to complete the repairs necessary by March first, two thousand and thirteen. We may not be able to get to that point. We're also waiting for grant money, the biggest part of which was a grant from, or be a donation from a local bank institution, who is going to donate a considerable amount of money for the project to us. They wanted a guarantee, though, if they donated the money, that the money would not, it wouldn't go to waste. You know, it wouldn't, that their money wouldn't be wasted as, as an investment. Mayor was not prepared to give, to give us that endorsement or, or that recommendation. So we have on one side, you know, the city saying they can't really commit, they can't really commit to giving a guarantee to someone who donates money that the manor still won't be tearing down. They don't feel they can do that. On the other hand, we have the lender who's saying, well, you know, I would really, for this amount of money, we would really need that commitment. So we kind of ended up in a gridlock on that situation. Where it's at now with this bank, it's at the corporate level. It's sitting there for them to make a decision. And what will happen is if they don't get an endorsement, it'll just drop after maybe another month or so.
Mr. Casmer, Mr. Casmer, I would ask you in the future for the report, to do it during the committee reports, because we enacted a five-minute time limit for public comments.
Okay, I'm done.
If you want me to come back. I'm not trying to rush you. I'm saying in the future, you know, during the committee reports, because you technically have a committee, that'd be the appropriate time to talk about it.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, Mr. Casmer, in the future, if you have a commitment from a particular company, contractor, builder, renovator, what have you, could you please have them put that commitment in writing and provide it to council?
Right.
Because making sure that they're licensed bonded, I believe, is important. But also, when you have a commitment in writing, it indicates good faith. And if they could specify just what work they're going to do, it helps us just in terms of evaluating your project and coming to a better conclusion about it.
Agreed. Yes.
That would be very helpful, because I know Mr. Jackson, I know he's a fine man, and it would just be interesting to see what he's proposing and what he's going to do.
Yeah. This is coming from his son, Mark.
Yeah, I know Mark, too.
You know Mark?
Nice people.
Yeah. We're trying to get our, our arms around the whole project at this point to see what commitments we can get for all the, for all the work, for about eighty thousand dollars.
Seeing as we have a time limit, but there is no way that the mayor can give a letter on a building that's condemned, John. When we talked about this, you also had suggested to me that the manor house is something the people want. And I suggested to you circulating a petition to put it on the ballot. That's an issue. Have you considered doing that?
We're, we're working on that. We'll be working on that in the meeting this Monday, the first step of that, Mr. Mayor. It'll be a, it'll be a petition, first of all, you know, well, we're still composing it, so.
All right. Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Just, just so that there is action happening, but there's no way that I could ever sign a letter on a building that we have condemned. I, I can't do that for a bank.
So we're in a, we're in a gridlock.
No, we're not in a gridlock. I can't do that because of my responsibility, of my position. Because if I sign something like that and it defaults, the city's liable. So, John, there's a lot at stake. I'm sorry, but it's not anything personal or anything against the manor house. It's business. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Randy Rivers. Randy?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Randy Rivers. I reside at six forty-two Notre Dame Avenue in Cuyahoga Falls, Ohio. I'm a candidate for sheriff of Summit County in this upcoming election. I thought I would come here tonight so you could at least see my, see the face and hear the voice behind the name. I grew up in Northfield Center. I come from a very long line of hard-working members of my family that are very much community-oriented. I have two brothers who are retired officers from Cape Coral, Florida. I have a brother who is a employee of the State Department of Mental Health in Columbus. And I also have a sister who is a schoolteacher at St. Barnabas. I said I grew up here in Northfield Center. I also grew up with the Summit County Sheriff's Office. My father, a man who I learned a lot of values and morals and hard work, was a town constable for Northfield Center, became chief constable, and then in the mid-sixties, when the Summit County Sheriff's Office took over, he became a deputy sheriff, and he became the commander of post one, right here in Northfield. And he retired under Sheriff Troutman after twenty years of service. I went to Nordonia High School here. I graduated in nineteen seventy-three. Shortly thereafter, I joined the United States Air Force. I became a law enforcement specialist and criminal investigator. I spent six years in the Air Force, active duty. Two of those years were spent in Southeast Asia at the end of the Vietnam conflict. My last year was spent in South Korea. I was honorably discharged as a staff sergeant in nineteen seventy-nine, and when that happened, I came home. In January of nineteen eighty, I joined the Cuyahoga Falls Police Department. I received my civilian police training at the State Highway Patrol Academy in Columbus, Ohio. I was a patrolman detective for Cuyahoga Falls for eighteen years. I worked every hour, around the clock, every day, in all kinds of elements. I've handled everything from homicides to barking dogs. During my patrolman years, I was a member of the SWAT team. And then later on, when I became promoted to lieutenant, I became commander of the SWAT team. So I'm somewhat familiar with making difficult decisions in difficult situations. I was married. I raised two kids. And while working, I attended the University of Akron. I received a degree in criminal justice and a degree in technical education, both with honors. I'm a certified OPADA instructor to train police officers, and I've spent thousands of hours in the classroom, and I've taught hundreds of young men and women who wish to pursue law enforcement here in the state of Ohio. I'm a graduate of the Police Executive Leadership College in Columbus, Ohio, also. I'm a member of FOP Lodge Forty-Nine, the American Legion, the Akron Crime Clinic, as well as being an associate member of the Summit County Police Chiefs Association. The Summit County Sheriff's Office has got a lot of good men and women. It really does. But being a government agency, it has its issues also. Right now, the biggest is the money situation. The financial situation has, has forced the current sheriff to cut back a lot. And these are issues that concern me with the jail. I'm a very responsive person. I'm a very dedicated and target-oriented. I am not afraid to tackle these issues that exist right now. And working with the men and women in the rank and file of the Summit County Sheriff's Office, together, working side by side with them, there is a way that we can pull ourselves through this. I believe in partnerships, fair and equal partnerships. When I was a captain in Cuyahoga Falls, we created a dispatch center. Part of that, not only just the equipment, but creating a partnership with the city of Cuyahoga Falls, the village of Silver Lake, and the city of Munro Falls. We created a fair and equal partnership while still respecting their individual autonomy.
Mr. Rivers?
Yes, sir.
What three changes would you make to the Sheriff's Department of Summit County to improve it?
What, three changes?
Yes, just rank them. The most, the most important, the second, and the third. How would you, how would you improve the Summit County Sheriff's Department? What would you do if elected?
The biggest issue?
I mean, you know, I'm looking for substance.
Substance?
Right.
The biggest issue right now is the Summit County Jail.
How would you resolve that issue?
Right now, you have no, you have no gymnasium, you have no library, you have no alcohol counseling, you have no drug counseling, you have no anger management counseling. These are things that have had to be cut back or eliminated. These are things that need to be reinstituted. Because if a person goes to that jail for either one day, three days, thirty days, or eighteen months, it is assumed that when they get out, they should be just a little bit better than when they went in. I can work with the social service agencies, ADM, the DD. I've talked with Jerry Craig, Dr. Doug Smith. We are working on a flow chart. We are working on establishing outside procedures through outside entities of the jail to work with them, fair and equal, to bring them in and reinstitute the counseling services that are direly needed. And I'm not saying, I'm not calling it recreational facilities. What I'm saying is these are important aspects of a person who's put in jail, that they need to allow themselves some escape, some mental escape, either through physical work or through a good book. But you don't have these right now.
Well, what would be two and three beyond that? And then how do you get the money to do these things?
Well, the money situation, again, I would have to work with, I'm, I'm, I want to be responsive to the rank and file to get ideas, to get effective suggestions, ideas on, from the people, the actual worker bees, on how to make things better, how to make it more efficient. I could work with Summit County Council. Right now, Summit County right now has a rainy day fund. And I keep hearing different figures. I cannot stand here right now and say, I know exactly how much money's in this rainy day fund, because I hear it from different people. It's different amounts. But my question is, how hard should it rain before you can start freeing up some of this money? But also, the fact is, is that we can get outside organizations in, like the churches and social services, work partnerships with the University of Akron, the clinical psychologists, the interns. People that can dedicate their time and perform a social service like this is direly needed.
How would you improve life for the normal deputy who's a Summit County deputy?
A normal deputy?
Yeah, just somebody who's out there on the road, just, you know, working hard.
Well, correct me if, if I, if I may be mistaken. I don't think I am. But right now, the Summit County deputies, the rank and file, have not had any kind of a pay raise whatsoever in five years, somewhere close to that, close to five years. In fact, their last contract, each deputy had to give up twelve hundred dollars, either through furlough days or their uniform allowance, just to keep their job. And then, at the same time, I have learned that there were some pay raises given to certain other individuals in the hierarchy of the Sheriff's Office. And that doesn't sit well with me. It probably doesn't sit well with the deputies who just gave their money back for others to get raises. There has to be a standard across the board, and that's what I want to work on, is creating the standard.
Yeah, because I think the most difficult thing as a public official, especially a person running for elected office, you make commitments, you make promises, you talk about programs. But as we have found, it's just very, very difficult to find the money to do those things. Just like Mr. Casmer talked a little bit earlier today, when he talked about renovating the manor house.
It is.
It's, how do you find that money? I mean, how do you work it? But what's your, what's your idea of it?
Well, I don't have a magic wand. That's for one thing, for sure. I don't. I don't have a magic wand I can wave and say, okay, everything's fine, and everybody's got all the kind of money they want, and they're all happy. It's going to take a long time. It's going to take a lot of effort. And I'm a person who is committed to investing my time, my energy, to seek answers, to seek ideas, to seek commitments from other people, to work together as a community, so to say, because it is a whole team. Okay? It's not a country club. It's not a clique. It is a organization of men and women who want to perform good, honest law enforcement, public safety work here in Summit County. And I'm the kind of person that shares in that same ideal, that I want to work side by side with and pursue that honest, fair, impartial leadership of professional young men and women.
Thank you for asking. Thank you for answering difficult questions.
That's very funny. If anybody, I know I went past five minutes, and I apologize. But if anybody has any specific questions regarding any specific issues, I will avail myself at the end of council meeting tonight to address those individually. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Randy. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right. That'll be the end of our public comments this evening. So we're going to move into pending and/or new legislation, starting with ordinance number sixty-eight, two thousand and twelve.
I would like to hold ordinance sixty-eight, two thousand and twelve at its second reading.
Second.
An ordinance amending the Business Regulation Code by adding new chapter seven ninety-four entitled Hotel and Motel Security and Safety.
The reason, allow me one second. The reason for the hold is we've been working with the mayor and the legal department on a more viable solution to the problem that we've been having with the hotels, so more to come on that.
And as I've talked with the council president and the mayor, we're about ready to say that this could go forward with the elimination of the last two sections, seven ninety-four, point oh four, and point oh five. We think the nuisance provision alone would be supportable under Ohio law. And we're ready to recommend that to you if you're so inclined. So maybe the next meeting you can add that, if everyone's in accord.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me know. I'd like to come and help out.
All right. Moving on to ordinance seventy-one dash two thousand and twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hold ordinance number seventy-one, two thousand and twelve at its second reading.
Second. I've spoken to Ken about this. We got some ideas to make some amendments, and we just did it tonight. So give us another two weeks to make those amendments, and we'll get them to you.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Okay, second.
Oh, yeah, I guess you need to read it. Hello. An ordinance amending section eleven seventy-nine oh five of the codified ordinances of the city of Macedonia in order to prohibit all electric signs.
Before we move on, and with the pleasure of some of my councilpeople up here, I'd just like to bring it up that in January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, we passed legislation, actually, it was number ninety dash two thousand and ten, that dealt with signage. Mr. Mark, you have all my respect, because you're very, very concerned about aesthetics, and I admire that in you. But when we came up with that signed ordinance for the city, there was a lot of work put in by planners. And we referenced a framework for on-premise sign regulations written by Alan Weinstein and D.B. Hart. Well, who's Alan Weinstein? Well, after his name, he has a J.D., so he's a doctor of justice, which means he's a very good lawyer. He's on the CSU faculty. He, he was president of the American Planning Association at the time that he wrote it. He's nationally recognized expert on planning law. He has passed a teacher in landscape planning, environmental law, and public and private policy and administrative law. In writing this, in his guidelines, section one hundred, purpose of the regulations, to promote the creation of an attractive visual environment that promotes a healthy economy. That means permitting businesses to inform, identify, and communicate effectively, and it directs the general public through the use of signs. In doing all of our sign ordinances, we have to keep in mind that we have to do it in a lawful manner that recognizes the rights of property owners. We encourage the orderly placement of signs, but we must avoid regulations that are so rigid and inflexible that all signs are marked bad for a general reason that could be taken to court and overturned. Does that happen? Yes, it does. He goes on further to say that availability of damages and attorney fees under this section clearly applies when local government unlawfully interferes with the business owner, property, and/or First Amendment rights associated with lawfully erected business signs. So if we go back, we have an excellent, excellent signed ordinance that took us months to pass at the end of two thousand and ten. And when we did pass it, we did with the confidence that this man knows what he's talking about. And then our planner took this plan and made our signed ordinance as it exists today. So please keep that in mind, counsel, as we move forward on this ordinance. Ordinance number seventy-four dash two thousand and twelve.
I'd like to offer ordinance number 74-2012 for its second reading by title only.
Second.
An ordinance instituting the senior snowpup removal program for the 2012-2013 winter season.
Moving on, ordinance number 75-2012.
I would like.
Sorry, go ahead.
I would like to offer ordinance number 75-2012 for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance to supplement the codified ordinances of the City of Macedonia by enacting new section 33.44 prohibiting the use of wireless handsets to text message with driving, while driving.
All right, moving on, ordinance number 76-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance 76-2012 for its second reading by title only, please.
Second.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Macedonia occupancy program grant agreement with Arlington Valley Farms LLC.
Moving on to ordinance number 77-2012.
I'd like to offer ordinance 77-2012 for its second reading by title only.
An ordinance amending ordinance 10999, adjusting the full-time compensation of the position of mayor effective the first day of the next mayoral term, that beginning December 1, 2015, in order to account for cost of living increases and to compare more closely with, and to compare more closely with adjacent communities.
Very good. Starting off with some new legislation tonight with resolution number 79-2012.
Before I offer resolution 79-2012, Scott, is this something that needs to be done tonight? Because it's pretty much perfunctory, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think we can address this on a third reading tonight, and before we do that, then Scott can explain it, because we do this every year.
Yes, sir. It's just for the budget commission of Summit County recognizing the rates determined by the voted and unvoted millage that wanted to receive next year property taxes.
Okay.
Oh, Mr. Engel, before you go any further, can you explain the meaning of that word you used, perfunctory?
I'll email it to you.
Well, I'm kind of in the dark here. Does perfunctory, does that mean it's kind of just a normal thing that just kind of happens? Is that right?
Something we do every year, Ken.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
I just got confused, there were more than two syllables there, so.
All right. I apologize, I'll try to, I'll try to use less syllables for you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution 79-2012 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, Mr. Barker, second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we pass and post, according to law, resolution 79-2012.
Roll call.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Daryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
A perfunctory, yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Resolution 79-2012 passes. Moving on to resolution number 80-2012.
I'd like to offer resolution 80-2012 for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of tablet-type devices for all members of council, the mayor, and of all department heads.
Josephine, I'm sorry, we didn't vote on first, second, and third. All in favor?
Well, you, just, we didn't discuss this in work session.
This should be a first reading.
Yeah, can we just, we need to do a first reading only, because we had Judge Hoover in there earlier tonight, and we took up most of our work session time, so there's some things we didn't have, we did not discuss, so I'd be more comfortable voting on it next meeting.
He didn't make a motion, excuse me, sir? He didn't make a motion to adopt, he just was a.
No, he made a motion for three readings.
And then he said, Josephine, so I got a little confused.
Yeah, it was my fault.
Okay.
They didn't vote on it. If they would have voted, he would have said, you know.
Noted the three readings.
Yes.
So we need to have a vote on the motion for three readings.
Right, there you go. All right, so that's what my next step is, okay?
Sure enough.
All right, Mr. Barker?
No.
Ms. Daryl?
Wait, you guys lost me now.
Okay, you need to vote to suspend the rules for the three readings.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Mr. Engel?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Mulner?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor.
Out of respect for the rest of the councilmen, until we get conviction from everybody, I vote no. Moving on to resolution number 81-2012.
I'd like to offer resolution 80-2012 for its first reading by title only, please.
Second.
A resolution authorizing the implementation of an emergency operations disaster plan.
We'll talk more about this, our audit is completed, and this is part of our audit that we need to do this, so Scott will fill us in a little later. All right, are there any other motions or legislative actions tonight? Any correspondence to the clerk?
Yes, sir, I did receive a letter, and I was asked to read it in its entirety. I will try to read as fast as I can. Dear Mayor and Council, as a former resident of Macedonia and former member of Macedonia's Historical Society, I have a few concerns. In 2001, council gave permission to a group of men and women to work on restoration of Longwood Manor. This group of men and women wanted to be Macedonia's Historical Society since they didn't have one. They became incorporated, became recognized by the state of Ohio, and became a 501(c)(3). They were now an honest-to-goodness historical society, a historical society that we thought people would appreciate. This historical started work in Longwood Manor. They worked every Saturday morning from 9:00 to 3:00 with a break for lunch. Many eateries in the area donated lunch to us, and several residents made lunch and brought it over to the manor house. This group felt truly appreciated, which is as it should be. We worked every year from fall through spring, instead of working around our own homes. From 2002 through 2006, they put over $3,500 into the city house. Everything was going as planned, and great strides were being made in renovations when in February of 2007, things went bad. Due to the pavilion having violations, put against them, and later demolished, a certain individual or individuals came to the city knowing full well that the Historical Society was working in Longwood Manor and were planning on addressing everything that was wrong in the building. They asked that Longwood Manor be inspected. After that inspection, the Historical Society was told, no more fundraisers in the building and no public until all violations were corrected. Three more inspections ensued, and the building was considered too dangerous to be in. We gave back to everyone, we gave back to everyone all period furniture they donated. We then hired an architect that knew much about the historical building. He did a study, and his final report stated the house does have problems, but not so much that it should be demolished. In February 2012, council voted and agreed that the Historical Society could resume their work for one year, March 1st of 2012 to March 1st, 2013. We thought maybe that the city was starting to appreciate us once again. We worked every, we worked very hard at bringing more funding in to help pay for the restorations. We quickly were inspired that many residents sent in donations that added up to $400. One of the members of the Historical Society went to PNC Bank. They are willing to donate a large sum of money to our cause if the mayor would write a letter. To our dismay, the mayor stated he would not write a letter. How can council vote and agree to let us work, and even through the year is not up, even though the year is not up yet? The mayor disappoints us once again. We were ready to show everyone what could be done. All other cities appreciate what their Historical Societies do. Macedonia, however, seems to work differently. Is there any chance at all for a city to sit down and think about all the work we've done and of all our money that we've put into the house? Is there a thank you or a pat on the back from the city? Would you kindly be able to show some trust to the Historical Society so that we can show what a wonderful asset the house could be? A thank you and a kind word would go a long way. If the city will not let us continue, how fair will it be to the people donating $400? Do we send donations back? What about all the historical items? They need, they need to have a home so we can seem, be seen by the community and not hidden away in someone's home as they are now. These items show the history of Macedonia and should be out in the open. Or should, or should we assume that you don't care about this either? This is written by Kathy Thomas. I have moved out of the area but plan to be updated on the Longwood Manor situation.
Is there any other correspondence?
No, sir.
Moving on, the mayor's report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to comment.
Sure.
I had spoken to Ms. Thomas several times, and quite frankly, I think this city, this council, and this mayor have shown a great deal of patience and support for the manor house. If they had not, that manor house would already be torn down, eliminated, and there would just be a vacant spot there. I think the proper way to approach this council, this mayor, this city, its residents, is to do so in such a manner that both sides show each other respect. Because I know that each member of this council and the mayor himself really would like to see the Manor Society succeed, they would really like to see the manor house restored. The difficulty, again, is dollars. But the fact that this council, this mayor, the city has been so patient and has allowed the manor house time and even assisted, I know Mr. Hlad has given lots of his time, as well as other city officials like Mr. Krevar, I just believe that that needs to be recognized. I think perhaps Ms. Thomas's letter may be overstate some things that she should not overstate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I feel that Macedonia would benefit from a medical facility of some type located here. With that thought in mind, I met with Uhi Kim, tough name to pronounce, but very nice lady, and she's the system vice president of service lines and ancillary services, and then now comes the important part, for the Soma Health Systems. You know Macedonia is a perfect spot for satellite facility. I think Uhi agreed with that. Our neighbor to the east has every other health system represented there. That's good, but it's not as good as one being located right here in Macedonia. For right now, Soma has advised me that they are going to, quote, "keep Macedonia at the top of our list," because we spent quite a bit of time, I drove around the city with her, showed her various places where such a satellite facility could extend their coverage and their business northward, because right now they're more or less stopped at Seasons Road. So hopefully, in the future, I'll get to meet with this lady again, and something will come out of it. If not, I will still continue to pursue the concept. We are hosting a joint economic development breakfast with the Nerdoni Hills Chamber of Commerce on November 8. We invited all of our Macedonia businesses to participate, and we'll be answering questions they may have. We also will be having informational talks from the Summit County Port Authority, Josh Mandell's office, and the Summit County Department of Economic Development. If anyone is interested in coming, please notify my assistant, Diana Augustine. Don't forget, Halloween is going to be celebrated on Wednesday, October 31st, starting at 6:00, ending at 8:00. Tomorrow, I will be attending an AMET's annual meeting in Kihaugah Falls. We will be having roundtable discussions about such subjects as transportation, safety, project funding, and connecting communities, along with planning how to accomplish these issues. AMET stands for the Akron Metropolitan Area Transportation System, and they disperse federal funds locally. Well, we've got a problem. And the problem is, there ain't none any federal funds to disperse. Why is there not federal funds to disperse? Because gasoline tax has not changed since 1994. Gasoline tax funds roads and bridge repair. So I don't know how people are sleeping at the switch, but we have not raised our gasoline tax, yet the cost of everything else has gone up. And by we, I don't mean we as Macedonia, I mean we as Americans. And yet, if it went up just according to the way the cost of living has gone up, right now gasoline tax would be 30 cents. You know, when they're out there building that bridge for us on Highland Road, all those people, and there's an army of them, are paying a city income tax. All of those people shop in Macedonia. All of those people help the economy of this community. Well, how about if we did that on a national scale? How about if we would fix all those roads that were built when Eisenhower was president that are now deteriorating, and bridges are falling apart? Put this country back to work. And the easiest way to do it is with gasoline. Now, the gasoline industry changed a lot in the last few years. We used to buy gas for under a buck. Now we're paying four bucks. Out on the West Coast, they're paying six bucks. Where's all this going to end? Well, the gasoline companies make sure that because automobiles get better gas mileage, we got to up our price. So they do that, and they rape us. And there's no other way to say it than that, because if you try and look for justification why that happens, it's because Jupiter lines up with Venus, I guess, because otherwise it's all malarkey. So tomorrow morning, your mayor will be there, and we'll be talking about these kind of things that, if you really think about it, taxes suck. Yeah, you're right. But suppose they raised the gasoline tax a dime a gallon? Let's just suppose, all right? A dime a gallon, most cars today have 17-gallon tanks. If you burn a tank of gas a week, it would cost you a buck seventy. For a buck seventy, you could say, I'm helping put my economy back where it belongs. Instead of being trillions in debt, we'll start spending money that we have, not money that we borrow. I'm not a very good politician, but I do know what I'm talking about, and all's I can say is, people, we're being raped, we need to get things done like they were done in Macedonia with federal dollars in this whole country. this whole country. Bennett Supply had its grand opening this past week, and already they have increased the size of their workforce by a couple of people. That don't sound like much, but, you know, they went from 26, I think, to 30, and they just opened their doors already. They're beautiful, a successful addition to our community. But I would be remiss if I did not mention the positive effect that Roland Hole area has experienced. I don't know if any of you know where Roland Hole Boulevard is at, but it's right by the Highland Road Railroad Bridge. I personally need to thank Tori and Jimmy Blackburn for all of their efforts as successful businessmen and residents of Macedonia. Both Tori and his brother are lifelong residents that took over their father's business and evolved it to its present status as a nationally-known wheel company. You know, they first moved in a small building on Route 82. They were Blackburn's hubcaps. Back in the days that cars had hubcaps, and hubcaps were easy to lose because any kind of an impact, like a chuck hole, could send them spinning off your car into a ditch. So we paid Blackburn's a visit, and we'd get a replacement, sometimes new, sometimes used. We went to, all went to Blackburn in those days. They were right, you know, that was more or less the center of Macedonia. As cars evolved and chrome wheels, fancy designs became the standard, original equipment with new cars, Blackburn's evolved too. Their business grew, and they moved to a bigger facility on South Freeway Drive. Their hard work continued, and they grew there even more, and they had to move again. This is where Roland Hole starts to come into the picture. They moved into what was the old, abandoned Roland Hole building. They are so conscientious that they made sure that they had a business to move into the building they were gonna move out of on South Freeway Drive, so the city wouldn't have an empty building sitting there. I think that's very, very commendable. But it doesn't stop there. They have brought Hi-Tachi here. Hi-Tachi's in the building with them. They have fixed up the old Roland Hole building, the landscaping, the building is beautiful. Bennett Supplies, they're now Hi-Tachi. I'm telling you, it's like rejuvenating our city. All of the buildings there are now full and looking good, where once stood abandoned, neglected shells. This is a family that cares about its city in every way possible. I'm grateful to have residents such as the Blackburns. I feel this tribute to them and their efforts to keep Macedonia looking good and growing strong needs to be acknowledged. Thank you very much, Tori and Jim, for keeping our welfare in your hearts. If you get a chance, folks, check it out. Just go look at the Highland Road Bridge, because it's amazing how fast it's actually becoming a bridge. And while you're there, on the north side of Highland Road, very, very close to where the bridge starts, is Roland Hole. There's some construction going on now, because they're actually gonna move Roland Hole over a little bit. But you can go down Roland Hole and swing around back there. We have Ohio Materials Handling right there next to the road. We have a plastic companies. It's amazing. It's enlightening. It's exciting, because Macedonia is becoming a destination, and as the roads and infrastructure improve, so will our economy. We will be honoring the Blackburn Company as our Business of the Month in the coming issue of the Messenger, so you'll see more about them and how they started and what they've done in there. Moving on to committee reports.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission will be meeting on October 22nd. The time is listed as 5:30, but it's my understanding that there will be a public hearing at 5:15 concerning an oversized building.
Are there any other committee reports?
Oh, just one thing here. Mr. Deemer, last council meeting, we terminated the Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
And I was council's representative to that committee. In reviewing the records, I found that pursuant to our volunteer ordinance, and that's Chapter 146, that certain requirements that were incumbent to be performed by that committee were not. Particularly concerning is the annual filing of finance reports. I believe about a week or two ago, the city sent out a letter. Council had authorized a, I believe, an expenditure, a contribution to the committee of several hundred dollars. We don't know the status of that, as well as the status of other donations or contributions made to that particular committee. Mr. Deemer, I would just like to request the Law Department to make an inquiry and make sure that the compliance that we have requested is completed. And if you could just do that and get back to council, I would very much appreciate that. I don't want to leave something unfinished that needs to be completed. So perhaps a letter to the chairman of that committee would be in order. Thank you, Mr. Deemer.
Could I know, Jack, regarding the Planning Commission, on the calendar, I cut it off? But on the 15th, do you have a special planning commission?
Yeah, I thought it was kind of unusual, but I assumed...
No, I cut it off.
You were right, and I was wrong, Josephine, because I thought the 15th...
Well, thank you, but I...
Okay, thanks a lot.
Just so you know that there's a special planning on the 15th. And is it at 5:30 as well? It's at 5:30 as well.
Are there any other committee reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to department reports. Jim?
Yes, service crews finished up the rec. center parking lot repairs with the dirt patch rental equipment, and they're now moving to South Bedford to see what we could do to try to get that road in a little bit better shape. Leaf collection for this season will begin Monday, October 22nd. Route guidelines and crew whereabouts will be listed on the city website. Approximately 31 trees were removed by park crew, by our parks crews. That'd be the Phase 1 ash tree removal and replacement project in the Spring Hill subdivision. We are planning on replacing those trees this season. Thank you to all participants that take advantage of the paper and cardboard recycling bins at the rec. center. River Valley is asking all community participants to kindly remind recyclers to flatten cardboard and bag shredded paper. Thank you again for your time spent dropping recyclable paper, mail, phone books, and cardboard to our location. That's all I have.
Very good. And the outcome at the rec. center with the equipment is good?
Right. I thought it was good, and we will sweep up the loose stone within a couple of weeks.
All right, great. The repairs you're talking about on South Bedford are just spot repairs, where we're gonna try and ease the pain of that road until we can fix it right?
Right.
So people don't think that's all we're gonna do?
Right.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Discount tire plans are approved, and water tap is complete. Building firm will be working on changing the rental inspection dates for 2014. We'll move that to the spring. You'll see some legislation on that.
Mike, I thought Mr. Kuchar had written a letter saying that the city had stymied those plans for discount tire.
At one time, he did say that. That's correct. But they resubmitted. Everything was approved. In fact, they're moving forward. In fact, I believe Mr. Kuchar paid for the water tap itself as part of the deal.
He's the property owner, correct?
Correct. Dunkin' Donuts is still on time, and they plan to open before Halloween. And then, just looking at some of our numbers, because we start early on wrapping up our year-end stuff, we were looking at increase in building permits alone, not zoning, not engineering. From 2008 to 2011, there was 232% increase in the number of permits. We went from 2008, 398 permits that year, to 2011, 1,320, so.
That is fantastic, and you're doing it with the same amount of people.
Correct.
We will be talking budget student council, so we need to address that for Mike, because we're really busy. All right, Angela?
Just a few items tonight. First, I'd like to remind everyone that we are offering second Saturdays at the rec. center, every second Saturday of every month, for 5th and 6th graders after we close in the evening. We reopen from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and we're open for 5th and 6th graders to come in, swim, play games, and have a good time. So we've had one so far. We have one coming up this weekend, and it was very, very well-attended, so we are looking forward to that. We have a dog extravaganza scheduled for Saturday, October 20th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon p.m. at the rec. center. It will be held outdoors, weather permitting. We'll move inside if necessary. We will have vendors for people to visit. We encourage people to bring their dogs with them on a leash. It's free, open to the public. We will have German Shepherd Club, canine clubs doing demonstrations. We'll have photo opportunities for you to take pictures with your pet with a fall background. We have giveaways and all kinds of fun things scheduled for that day. Lastly, we have our annual winter craft show scheduled for Saturday, November 17th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we're currently seeking crafters and vendors for that event. So if you are interested, please contact us at the rec. center for an application. Thank you.
You bet. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. In response to your question on Resolution Number 81, which is a resolution authorizing implementation of an emergency operations disaster plan, that comes out of our audit from the management letter that was noted also in the 2010 audit. We do have an emergency plan that was implemented years ago by the fire chief that we have, but it's not in accordance with what the auditor is looking for. So basically, we drafted a plan that'll satisfy these requirements, and we won't have that issue coming into the management letter next year. The actual exit conference was last Tuesday on 10/9, and Ed Morse from the Audit Committee and Rita Darrow, councilwoman, attended. There were no findings for recovery. Most of the management issues were from the conversion of the old system to the new system. We've got it straightened out. We should, it was issued a clean report, even though we did have some issues as far as the accrual methods that was carried over from the cash basis. But the bank reconciliation and everything was never, never an issue on that. I just wanted also to talk about the Water M&amp;E Fund. Last year, as council remembers, we are late penalty. It was $2 for not paying, which then we have to do a special assessments on property taxes. And the bills go out early in the year. It's $20.80 for residential, and it's the same fee that was implemented in 1967, when postage was $0.05 and gas was $0.33. I talked to Chair Dave Engel about maybe getting a small increase for next year, because this money is used mostly for the maintenance of our water fire department hydrants, and then when a line does break, we're responsible for it, and so we have to pay that money out of there. We currently collect about $100,000 a year out of there. We have about $200,000 we've been carrying, but just like this year, we've spent, well, year-to-date revenue was $102,000, and year-to-date expenses was $92,000. So I just don't want to see that fund get depleted down, because the cost of maintenance and everything else is rising. And I would just actually recommend a small increase in the fee from the 2080 that's currently being done. But the good news is, we did collect more money from the late fees. From moving that late fee up to $2, was the past one, to $10, we actually collected $8,800 in late fees. Now, we won't collect this money till next year, when it goes on the property tax bills. Last year, the late fees, because they were only $2, we collected $1,400. And there were about 700 parcels delinquent last year compared to 950 or so this year. So we had a little more delinquencies, but again, the late fees was significant, $7,000 or more that people will be paying. The water, excuse me, Rita will have their subpoena program at City Hall on November 29th and 30th from 9:00 to 5:00. So unfortunately, if you do get a letter from Rita and you have an issue with payment, either payment or compliance with your city income tax, I urge you to call them. They work for us, and they're very professional. I've never had any issues that haven't been resolved. They'll work with you on a payment plan. They're very flexible on it. It's just a matter, you shouldn't let it go to the point where they gotta call and subpoena you in, because it's just gonna cost you more money. If you have a question, you can call me direct at City Hall. I'm the contact person for Rita in the Income Tax Department. But I strongly recommend you don't wait to subpoena program to come out. They'll work with you. They're, you know, they give plenty of opportunities to get your account straight. And speaking to Rita, speaking about Rita, the collections to date that we've received is $6,528,000, and we're only $170,000 off from the 2011 total collections. So I estimate we're gonna receive another $800,000 more by the end of the year than we've received in 2011. But as you know, we spent at least that amount of money in capital this year. So even though we've received a little money this year, we've also budgeted and spent it out for needed repairs, on street improvements, and capital equipment. But there'll be some other policies that I'm hoping council will implement in the next couple of weeks concerning the audit. Some of them are distributions of income. Currently, we have an ordinance that specifies a certain percentage of our income tax supposed to go to parks. And while we do budget that amount, Rita, or the auditor, has requested that you basically make it a little bit plainer in our ordinance of the total amount that you want distributed. We satisfy that requirement by transferring that money, and, but they just need it cleaner. It was a comment that was also done last year in 2010. So there'll be some communication going forward with that. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Scott, I have this report on Mike Ladd that we discussed at the prior meeting about the audit. How much did that cost the city?
I believe they said $950. I've never seen the report. I know there's been a lot of conversation about that, but I did talk to her, that exit conference during the daytime, or right before the meeting, and again, I was never issued that report, whether electronically or manually, so I don't know what's part of that. But yeah, they did tell me that the cost of the audit did go up $950 because of their time involved.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Scott. Tim?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to tell everybody about the Macedonia Firefighters Association Annual Halloween Party. It's gonna be Sunday, October 28th. That's a change. Same with the time is a change from 4:00 till 6:00. So it's on a Sunday, October 28th, from 4:00 till 6:00, and of course, it's gonna be at the fire station. We'll have costume parties, fire truck rides, apple cider cookies, popcorn, as we do every year. And as you mentioned, Halloween trick-or-treat will be October 31st, which is a Wednesday, from 6:00 till 8:00. Please have the kids wear bright color costumes that are flame-retardant, masks that don't block their vision when they're crossing streets, and if at all possible, they should go with an adult who has a flashlight. All of our fire department trucks will be out cruising through the neighborhoods so that we can make a quick response and keep everybody safe out there. Also, it's fire prevention week. Practice fire drills in the house and know two ways out is the theme for this year. So please, practice fire drills at home. Make sure the kids know what the fire alarm... Make sure the kids know what the fire alarms sound like, and practice them at home. So that's the theme for this year. I'd also like to thank Chick-fil-A for hosting a fire prevention night last night. Fifteen percent of their proceeds went to ACBC, which is aluminum cans for burned children of Cuyahoga County. That's through Metro Health Medical Center, where a burn unit is, and Northfield Center Fire Department, which is Northfield Center, Sagamore Hills Fire District, Macedonia, and Northfield Village Fire Department had apparatus there last night. Unfortunately, Northfield Village beat us in the chicken-eating contest, so we fell. They ate the most chicken in the fastest amount of time, so we did lose to that. But the good thing was, is the proceeds, I don't know the amount yet, but fifteen percent of their sales went to aluminum cans for burned children. So that's all I have, Mayor.
It was nice to see different communities, fire departments come together for such good cause. It was very nice.
Yes, thank you.
All right, John?
I have several things, Mayor. We've been working with the schools, Dr. Clark and Casey Wright up at the high school to resolve some more of the traffic issues. Excuse me. If you've been through the school property now, you'll see they've removed the old tennis courts, and it's now a parking lot, so they've added about seventy more parking spots there, and that's helped resolve some of the issues in the afternoon. Also, working with Dr. Clark, we've come up with a new texting alert for all the parents of the students in the school systems. There's an emergency link page. If they send out an emergency text, most parents now have a cellphone, and they could be referred to a page for information, which was extremely helpful. For those who haven't met Dr. Clark, he is the real McCoy. He's wonderful to work with. He does his best to do exactly what he says and get what he says he's going to do done. So I really appreciate working with Dr. Clark. Some of the traffic issues we've been dealing with, I know you and I have discussed with Mike Ladd and Nick Feeney, we're still working to resolve some of the issues we still have lingering. We've been, I've been working with Jim over at Signal Service, adjusting some of the lights, so you'll see some of the timings changed again to help offset some of the changes that we made in the traffic patterns. One of the things that I've noticed, you've noticed, and we get calls on, is part of the traffic issues we have is people don't pull all the way up when they're stopped in traffic. They leave a car or two car lengths, and we have limited space for some of the, like turn lanes, for example. We want to fill those turn lanes up with as many cars as we can, because the light acts and lets them off, and you don't back up in another lane, so if you can, pull all the way up. This isn't the inner city at midnight, where you have to worry about getting out and, you know, all that stuff. So please, pull all the way up when you're stopped in traffic. Another issue we've had, we've had break-ins of cars again. This happens every now and then in our city. It happens in every city around us. Women leave their purses in their vehicles, whether they're going into the church, whether they're going, watching a baseball game or soccer game, excuse me, or into the YMCA to work out or whatever. I don't know exactly how they do it, but we believe that people are there watching. They see a woman walk into a business or whatever without their purse, and they're assuming the purse was left in the car. The purses that have been taken were well-hidden, so it's not as though they walked by the car and saw the purse sitting there. So for those women, don't leave your purse in a car. You're inviting getting it stolen. It's very easy to not become a victim here. Just don't leave your purse in your car. It's simple as that. And this also, we're getting into the Christmas shopping season. We see break-ins in vehicles. If you go to the store, you buy whatever presents you're gonna have, you put them in the back of your minivan or SUV, which are very popular now. The subject comes up, puts his hands on the window, looks in, sees electronics there. They break the window and go into your car and steal your presents. So if you're going to shop, put stuff in the trunk, or take it home, and then go out to dinner or whatever you're going to do. But they frequently break into cars during the Christmas shopping season, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Good advice. Joe?
Thank you.
All right, moving on to unfinished...
Mr. Feeney?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to report that Bruce Road was started last week and finished pretty quickly by the contractor. You know, started on Wednesday, it was completed by the beginning of this week, so we're pleased with that. The last road remaining on the program is Bavaria, so we'll wrap that up soon and close that job out.
Hey, Nick, have we sent something out to the businesses on that road? Because I know we ran in some submissions...
Right, we had some hiccups with Bruce, and that schedule actually was, the last time I reported to you, was anticipated to be the eighth, and we got an opportunity from the contractor and jumped on it. As a result, we didn't get sufficient notification out to the residents, which the contractors required to do so. On Bavaria, we'll make sure that the businesses are notified in advance. It'll be a little bit different there, because we're not closing the road. It's gonna be part with construction, but we'll still make sure everybody's aware of what to expect and on what day to expect it.
Do you have any idea when that's set to begin?
It's supposed to be in the next two weeks.
So we don't have a definitive date yet?
No.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Actually, very good job, Nick. The Bruce Road was done in four days, and they had to go down fifteen inches. So I'll tell you what, the roads that we have in this city were not made very, very well at all, and they're very, very old, and when you see what was done on Bruce, and as quickly as it was done, I have nothing but praise for you and the staff from Parent Construction. Okay. Yes, Tim?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I forgot to say I have some, a limited supply of glow-in-the-dark bracelets for the kids, and of course, the no-texting rings, which I still have some. I see there's legislation, so I'll leave them up here. If anybody'd like to come up, take them home, give them to their kids, they gotta put them underneath the light, they'll glow in the dark when they go out for a trick-or-treat, so.
Thank you. Any unfinished business?
Yes, Mayor, one of the most enjoyable years in my twenty-six, twenty-seven years here was the year that our football team went to the state finals, the championship game, and the other year is when we were in the Final Four. And one of the things I learned, having never been a band parent before, was how wonderful the kids who worked in that marching band were, and how much work they put into it. Well, now comes our alumni band, has been reinstituted. I was told the last time they had one was nineteen ninety-five, and I always remembered how we had games at Cuyahoga Falls. They filled the football field with alumni, hundreds of them, playing. They sounded wonderful, and I always thought that that would be a nice thing for us to have. And I plugged it here and there. But I wasn't alone. Lots of other people had the same idea, and this year, we have an alumni band that debuted at the band festival last week, and I haven't had a chance to see them, but I hope that we have another defined year with our football team being the surprise team of northeastern Ohio. So if you get a chance, go out and see our football team, see our marching band, see all the good things that are happening in town, and so many of those kids are from Macedonia.
Mike, is this week homecoming, do you know?
I don't know.
I thought I saw that it was homecoming.
It is homecoming.
It is homecoming.
This Friday is homecoming.
Okay.
And the football team made Fox Eight's Top Eight, Mike. I hope you saw that.
Well, it's just, when you have kids playing fall sports and being in the band, you just normally go to those things, and now that they're graduated and moved on, I have to watch in the paper. So I'm gonna make a point to come to the games. They're a good team and a nice new field, and I would love to see the alumni band.
Very good. Any other unfinished business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, folks. We'll see you next time.